Here.
Hamilton.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Sherman.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Wallace.
Item four is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2019. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $141,845.02 and payroll expenses of $201,101.89. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Sherman and second by Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Next item is reports from staff. For the sake of time, we want to shorten this agenda item this evening. If there are any council members that have questions regarding the reports that are in the packet, feel free to ask them. If not, we're going to forego the reports from staff this evening. All right. Item seven, public hearing over the planning commission's recommendation to deny the Young Street six housing addition plan. On, well, it was a week or two ago. I can't remember now. I'll get it pulled up here. But last time the planning commission met, they had a public discussion and they had a vote on whether or not to allow a six-house addition added to Young Street around the 1400 block. This, either this particular proposal or a variation of this proposal has been heard at the Board of Adjustments as well as two planning commission meetings. Planning commission looked at the project and the project, deemed that the project did not conform to the zoning requirements for an RGA zone, which is what that neighborhood is up there on Young Street. Two primary reasons in zoning requirements are that there is not enough street frontage to construct six houses on those two lots in a partial lot, and there is not enough lot space on either of the, except on one lot, to construct any residential property. Requirement of 8,000 square feet in an RGA and only one of the lots in that property conforms to that requirement. So, we heard from many of the people that are in the room this evening at the planning commission meeting, and the planning commission voted unanimously to deny the proposed development there on Young Street. The public hearing tonight, for the sake of keeping this conversation productive, I want to know two things. Do you support or do you oppose the planning commission denying the proposed development? If that is not what you have to discuss, it is not relevant to this public hearing. If you support the planning commission's recommendation to deny the development, that's all we need to hear. If you have something to say, that's all we need to hear. We support the planning commission's recommendation to deny. If you oppose the planning commission's recommendation to deny, meaning you think the proposal should be brought forward and developed, then you will have two minutes to argue your case. If at any time any of the comments become out of hand, we'll just end the public hearing. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share as far as support or opposition? Please stand up, state your name, and...
Well, under your terms, Tom Crenshaw. And under your terms, I would support the planning commission's denial of the project. And one question, is this too summer a day for winters to be here?
He has a special occasion if he figured his life might depend on him being there.
Kelly Schrock, I support the planning council's decision also, but I have a small question on the Alba City ordinance on stormwater drainage.
Let's bring that up, public comment at the end of this meeting. It's not relevant to this public hearing.
Julia Schrock, I too am in agreeance to support the denial of the project.
Thank you.
I'm Carl Hartwig, and I'm happy to say that I support the decision that was made also.
Thank you.
Tim Bojus, I support the same deal. I don't think we need it.
Thank you.
Dan Jackson, I too support your decision.
I'm with her.
All right. Kristy, you're the only one left. You good?
Well, I'm the chairman of the planning commission, and I support our decision to deny the request.
Thank you. There's no further comment, we'll move on to item eight, which is discussion and action to accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the Young Street six addition plan. Is there any, are there any questions from the council members or any further discussion from the council members before we move to action? If there is none, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to deny. Oh, to accept the planning commission's...
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I don't have it before me. Thank you. That's why we have it here.
I have a motion by Mrs. Hamilton and second by Mr. Stelling to accept the planning commission's recommendation to deny the Young Street six addition plan. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Second.
All right. Item nine is discussion and action on the appointment of city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for fiscal year 2019-2020 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. As in years past, I think all of our council members are familiar with this, but the city has appointed representatives to negotiate on behalf of the council with the Firefighters' Union representatives. Last year, that was Mr. Stelling and Mrs. Hamilton. And, and I have spoken with each of them. Both of them are willing to continue in that capacity if we would have them to do so. Randy or Mary, do you have anything you want to add?
I'm going to Randy Stelling's lead.
I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Stelling and Mrs. Hamilton to negotiate on the city's behalf for FY 2019-20 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract.
Second. I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and second by Mr. Sherman to appoint Randy Stelling and Mary Hamilton as city representatives to negotiate on the city's behalf for fiscal year 2019-2020 IAFF Local 3782 Union Contract. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item ten is discussion and action on the nomination of the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority Board Member to represent Woods County. The OEDA board is needing a representative from appointment by the mayors in Woods County. That would be, from among the mayors of Woods County, that would be me, Susan Bradford of Anoka, Joel Shelders of Tacoma, or Chad Bracken of Freedom. The OEDA, I want to say it's important that we have a voice at that table when they're meeting, and I, I would, the way this works, the way they've explained it here, says once a mayor is selected, they or their designated appointee will serve a three-year term as Woods County Cities and Towns Representative on the OEDA board. So I would, if I were elected from among the other communities, I would be willing to serve, but I would probably have a designated appointee as well, depending on, because I believe the meetings are out of town during the workday. So I would probably try to see if we could find somebody to designate, and I do have some people in mind. We've been trying to get this, get an appointment to, on Delstead for a little bit now, and I've got some people in mind. If, if the other communities were to vote the same way, or of course you could vote for one of the other communities, I would...
What motion is due for that, for tonight?
For the mayor, yes. The mayor of your choice.
I'll make a motion to elect Mayor Kelly Parker for the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority Board to represent Woods County.
Second. I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and second by Mr. Sherman to nominate Kelly Parker, Mayor Alba, as a nominee for the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority Board Member to represent Woods County. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Item eleven is discussion and action to nominate up to two candidates to fill a three-year term on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group beginning July 1st, 2019. OMAG is our liability insurance carrier. They, in their affiliation with numerous towns and cities across the state, have the requirement that their board members are among those, representatives of those cities and towns. They are seeking nominations only at this time, and the elections for those will come at a later date. They permit us to nominate up to two people to, and there will be two positions, one whose term is coming up and the other one is an open position. So we may nominate up to two. My understanding that if we have had a board member from the city of Alba, it's been quite some time ago, it's not been in recent history, but it wouldn't be a bad thing for us to have representation there. Prior to the meeting, Randy and I had a chance to discuss. It sounds like Randy, do you have some interest in this?
Yes.
So if someone were to nominate Randy, I would make a motion to that extent, Randy is willing to serve.
And so... Make a motion to nominate Randy Stelling, OMAG Representative, for the nomination and election to the board, so...
I think that'll work. Did I read the agenda? I can't even remember now. Let's have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Mr. Wallace to nominate Randy Stelling to fill a three-year term on the Board of Directors of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, OMAG, beginning July 1st, 2019. For further discussion, is there, are there any other council members with an interest? All right. Please, any other discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item twelve, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited, two minutes per speaker. Speaker must please identify himself or herself, and Brandon, keep the clock. All right. Are there public comments?
We're probably similar approaching the same thing, that's the drainage issue on that project. Kelly Schrock, I have a question on this Young Street deal. On city ordinance of 50.40.40, a diversion of water from a natural course, a diversion of storm, excuse me, a diversion of storm flow shall be avoided if all possible. If stormwater is diverted from its natural course, the construction plan shall include, and it gives three things the construction plan should include. I'd like to see them.
Stop by City Hall and make a request.
I did.
Okay. And?
They don't have them. I haven't been asked. I asked the city inspector.
Okay. We'll follow up on it.
Follow up when we see them.
Because there should be a sketch showing existing waterways, there should be a profile of the waterway change, and there should be provisions for sodding, paving, prevent soil erosion. Then also in the 50.40s on down, it talks about the runoff shall not be more than 2.5 inches per hour, and there should have been a study done on that. So when I went in, when this first started, and I went in and I talked to, actually the city manager, and said, "We got dirt work going, we're piling my yard full of dirt, do we not have to get permits for dirt work?" And the answer was, "No, we don't need permits for dirt work." By this ordinance, it looks like we should have had something. And if we didn't as a city get this, because we knew it was going on from the very first, when they burnt the house down, till today, we knew it was going on. So, I'm trying to figure out on if they did the sketch, and the city approved it, or they didn't do what they are required to do, and the city didn't shut them down. That's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, here I've got a set picture Forrest Nelson sent. Basically on the same thing that he's talking about. I don't know how many of you have been up there and actually looked, but it's all showing runoff, drainage problems, how it's been built up, erosion problems. Basically the same thing he's talking about, is why there's been no erosion control on this project.
Could we change the flow of the water?
Runoff control. Basically, he is creating a flow that wasn't there, and the city should have some concern about this, because that flow is all going into that Ninth Street drainage down there, which has been kind of the problem for the city for a long time. So, but Forrest presented this, but he didn't want to get out tonight, which I don't blame him. But that's what, that's what we're talking about. I don't know how many of you have actually been up there and actually seen the project and see what's going on or not, but there's some pictures, which will explain a little bit more about it.
Do you, do you have another copy of those, or?
Uh, I probably, he has a copy of them. Do you want to keep those?
Well, either we can, either we, I'd like to have a copy at least, whether it's those themselves or another set right down at City Hall.
Just keep that copy, your copy right there.
And we'll have them if...
He has another copy.
And we can make copies of them.
He gave me those, but he has another copy, so...
And we'll get these back to you after we make a copy of them.
Okay. We're, we're just basically asking for something to be, you know, because that's going to really, really become a big problem this spring, if they're not forced to do something with that property.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? All right. Thank you. Item thirteen is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members have any comments?
I want to praise the city workers already, I mean, they've been outstanding in some intersections and things, they're going up and down, and I mean, I think a lot of the joy get out. Doing some of the snow stuff, so when we have, of course, snow, they really like to get out, they go right on it.
They sure do.
I'd like to praise the Chamber of Commerce, a great event, celebrating the outstanding citizens and all of that. Catered well by Alba's Market, not to plug anything, but it was...
I got a message today that we served 178, and we were just hoping for 150, but we had 178.
I think it was the biggest turnout they've had.
Biggest we've had.
It was good, it was good.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members? Well, I do thank all of you for coming out this evening. Be careful heading home, and we're going to adjourn the city council meeting and open the meeting of the Alba Utility Authority. All right. Joe Don, call the roll, please.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2019. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $83,167.24 and payroll expenses of $53,293.3. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Dr. Hannaford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item five, discussion and action on the wellfield coronation station construction to, on awarding the wellfield coronation station construction to Beteco Inc. out of Sepulpa, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in the amount of $205,555. Joe Don?
Well, we accepted our bids and opened them on Tuesday, February 5th. There were five bids ranging from $205,555 to $321,000. The engineer's construction estimate for this project was $152,500. So we are about five, about $50,000 over budget on this project by awarding if we were with this contract. I would recommend that we award the contract to Beteco with the knowledge that the overage that we will be paying here has been saved off of our waterline project. When staff rewarded the, and the council awarded us to proceed with the waterline project and self-perform that project, not hire outside contractor, we saved about $220,000. So that's where the overage for this project and the overage for the HVAC project will come from to pay right now. I don't see any reason that we will be not working on our list of projects that we have, or we'll have to cancel any of this, any projects, because we don't have enough funding. I think that we'll have plenty of funding to do all the projects that we've got as of right now. We do have two more projects to bid out. One is the sanitation lift fishing on Skyline, and the other is the pressure pump on at Oklahoma Boulevard Water Tank at Oklahoma and 14th. So my recommendation would be to award this contract to Beteco in the amount of $205,555 as the lowest and best bid, and then we pay for out of the 2019 revenue bond proceeds.
I'm sorry, Joe Don, I may have missed it. When did you say that work would be able to be started and completed?
On this project? Well, once awarded, we've got a, we don't have a set date yet to start, thus there's no completion date. There's a 180-day timeframe for them to do it, but once awarded, we will sit down with the, with Beteco in a pre-work conference and get the contract signed, set the begin date and set the end date.
It shouldn't be 180 days, I probably should have...
I would expect this to be, no.
Anybody have any questions, Joe Don? I entertain a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to award the wellfield coronation station construction to Beteco Inc. out of Sepulpa, Oklahoma, has the lowest and best bid in the amount of $205,555, $205,555, I'm so sorry.
Just a second.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and second by Mr. Stelling to award the wellfield coronation station construction to Beteco Inc. out of Sepulpa, Oklahoma, as the lowest and best bid in the amount of $205,555. Best of the year. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
All right. No further business to discuss, and duly authority meeting, that meeting is adjourned, and we will call to order, please call the roll.
Eckhart?
Yes, here.
Stelling?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Sherman? Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at ADA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2019. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 22nd, 2019. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of three hundred three thousand sixty dollars and fifty-eight cents and payroll expenses of thirteen thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars and forty-seven cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Stelling, and a second by Mrs. Hamilton, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Gentlemen and ladies, and ladies, we are adjourned.